City of Salem, Massachusetts, the City Council Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, met in the council chamber on Monday, May 21st, 2024, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing the fiscal year 2025 operating budgets and capital improvement plans for the Harbor Master, the Fire, Salem Fire Department, and the Salem Police Department as well. Notice that this meeting was posted on May 17th, 2024, at 3:09 PM. Joining us tonight from the Administration and Finance Committee is Councilors Varela, Councillor Stott, Councillor Pozniewski, absent is Councillor Jurislaw, and joining us from the Committee of the Whole, we have Councillor Marsillo, Councillor Cohen, and Councillor Davis, Councillor Harvey, Councillor Hopworth, and Councillor Watsonfeldt. Also joining us is Chief Dion from the Salem Fire Department, Chief Miller from the Salem Police Department, and our Harbor Master, Bill McHugh. And welcome, everyone. These public meetings are for fun to review of best practice and to learn about the departments and how they utilize their funds. To view the full budget, all 702 pages of it, please go to salemma.gov/fy25. And the homepage also includes, towards the bottom of the mayor's statement, a link to the Budget in Brief, which is a really helpful summary. When you come up to present, please tell us about what your department does, anything you'd like to highlight, any significant changes in your budget, and any capital projects you'd like to discuss. I'd also like to mention that the capital improvement projects by department are in the larger tab section, and it's Section Number 7 in the front of the book. The Fire Department is at the bottom of Page 261, and the Police Department is Page 263. And we are starting with the Harbor Master, which is Section 14, Page 451 for the Budget And welcome, Bill McHugh.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the committee. Thank you. The Harbor Master Department, as you probably are well aware, is in charge of law enforcement and protection of life and property, emphasizing on life on the waterways in and around Salem, as well as our jurisdictional islands. We work closely with the Police Department to attain that goal. We also perform all the mooring management functions in the harbor. That means assignment of moorings, collection of fees. We manage the commercial marina. During times of MTSA, city-sponsored MTSA events, large ships, we are the facility security officers for the port, and we also oversee the ferry as well, on behalf of the city. A lot of the maintenance work down there. The budget that is presented here for you this evening is level funded on the operations side, with the exception of 10% increase in utilities, which was recommended. Personnel, part-time positions stayed the same. We base those on man-hours that we anticipate needing. It's a bit of a, a little bit of a risk sometimes, but we've seemed to done well with it since I've been here, and it's based really on weather events, whether clement or not, they don't both require personnel or additional personnel, and as well as other events going around the city. One thing I want to point out is in this, and I think it's going to be considered, or some of you are probably thinking about it, is what's going to happen when the port opens, and there's going to be more activity with commercial vessels in and out of the harbor. That was addressed with the Salem Harbor Port Authority this winter. There was a harbor usage fee that was negotiated and implemented, so as these vessels come in and out, that will help alleviate any costs, any additional costs to the city beyond what we have here in front of you. As far as the full-time equivalent positions, I put in for a bump for the deputy harbor master. I've done that the last couple of years. I do believe he is, for what he does, is underpaid compared to other communities that do, their deputy harbor masters perform less of a function. He did get a little bit of a raise there, which is good, and I think that really reflects the summary of the budget that is here before you.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council? Councillor Marsillo?
Thank you, Chair. I have a bunch of questions because I don't know anything about your line of work, so I'm hoping you can enlighten me a little bit. Why is there an increase in the warning tags issued? Why are you anticipating, is it warning tags? Yeah. Why are you anticipating an increase from 20 to 75 for next year?
We're getting ready to make some new assignments, and usually that next year, people try to fall, have trouble keeping up with the program. So it's people that we're bringing in and assigning new moorings to. Those performance measures are guesses at best. I mean, I hope to have zero fatalities, but yet we already had one this year. So I mean, even when we go to citations issued, it's really a best estimate on past years, what we anticipate going forward. Some of those warning tags may be simple warnings too with, due to the increased activity in the harbor. We might just need to do a little extra education with some people.
Does that follow with the facility security response, that increase also?
Yes. And in there, I don't think there's a realistic number for ship escorts if we get underway. We've been talking about a groundbreaking now for the last couple of months. Once that groundbreaking does occur, and we start to see the contractors mobilize, that will steadily go up.
Okay. Then, do you ever charge boaters for certain, I guess, services that you, like towing or fuel spilling or something, do they get charged for that?
So fuel spilling is different. That comes under EPA, Coast Guard, we all work together on that. I'm not going to say that if someone's negligent, they might not get a citation, either a uniform environmental citation from us, or possibly an ordinance citation if there was something that accompanied it caused it. As far as towing for services, no, we do not. You know, that's sea tow and towboat. We do perform those duties, but we do not charge for those duties, and I don't know of any other communities that charge for those services as well.
Okay. And then, we just raised the fees for moorings, I believe, last year? Was it last year?
It was more, three or four years ago.
Three years ago. Forget that, then. Okay. Time flies. All right.
Maybe, I mean, our communities around us, especially Marblehead, right after we did that, went up another $2 in all their mooring fields. But again, it has to be reasonable, and we have to be able to look deep and see what it's costing us to provide the service. So we'll be looking at that over the next year. And it has to be focused on those users. In other words, they wouldn't be paying for, and this is example we already covered, for the deepwater port operations. That's going to fall under the Salem Harbor Port Authority.
Okay. Is that one of the fees, Mayor, that is going to be, you're going to do the analysis every year just to make sure?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Varela.
Thank you, Chair Merkel, through you to Mr. McHugh. Thank you for what you guys do. It's always a pleasure to have you here. You're always concise. I had a very quick question. When it comes to the utilization of our moorings here in Salem, what's the percentage that's utilized right now to what we have available?
So it's usually 100%, but not at all at the same time. We allow someone that is between boats, or maybe you have an extraordinary circumstance, health issue, a year, and then they have to get back to us. It's like painting a bridge. Sometimes it would be a year and a half before we get to somebody that may be a little bit overdue, but we get the mooring reassigned. One of the tricky things is making sure that gear, so some of the clubs like to have extra moorings, and we need to make sure that the gear is being utilized in a specific order, that be in compliance with House General Law. So every once in a while, we'll get some moorings that somebody donates to a club, and we have to track that down, and usually we end up removing the gear, or making sure it's going to the next person in line.
Okay. I guess my question is, when it comes to new people coming to our city that do want to utilize a mooring, is there a waiting list like Marblehead, which is like years down the line? Not that bad, right? I'm assuming.
We're pretty aggressive with the mooring list. That's why we do that. We have a cloud-based mooring management system, which makes it a lot easier. We implemented that a few years ago. We do have a decal system with a control number, so the boats can go by, and no matter what you do to the decal, that control number will come back to, if it's going to be Andy Varela, it comes back to Andy Varela with the specific boat that's supposed to be on that mooring. One thing that I think we have to keep in mind, and this goes back to 1981, then Thompson and Mentuck Navigation, they got a permit for up to 350 rental moorings in two fields. Back then, the average size of a boat was probably 20, 22 feet. Our average size of boats now in the harbor is probably close to 32 to 35 feet. And so those are the moorings you see safe harbor rent right now. They're the only ones that can legally rent moorings, and we have, as a department, because of the lack of space and wanting to be fair about making assignments to just residents that don't want to pay to play, they want to buy a mooring permit and have gear installed, we've told them that they're not going to expand any further. So if that helps answer your question.
Awesome. That does. Thank you, sir.
Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Merkel, not being a member of the committee, through you to the Harbor Master. I just have some gratitude. I try to make it to as many Port Authority meetings, and I think a lot of people don't know how much work you put into the build-out and all the information that goes, is going into the wind terminal, and your knowledge about the industry. I also want to, not to bring up a bad memory, but you were very responsive when we had a few fish in the harbor, and that was really for, a lot of my ward, and I know the ward won, it was really a difficult process, and I really appreciate that. And the last thing is your attention to the willow pipe and keeping boats away from it, which I know you've done, you know, specifically, but just, you know, your relationship with the contractors and your good work there. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Councillor Pozniewski?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Bill, could you touch on a little bit about, give us an update of what's happening with the harbor as far as shoring up the new terminal and what's expected coming in besides the wind energy people, but cruise ships, commercial ships? What do you see in your crystal ball? Because I think yours is a lot clearer than the rest of ours right now.
Yes, sir. So what you're going to see is, you're going to see, and right now, we're going through a little bit of a vetting period between Crowley, which will be the developer, along with their contractor. It'll be a joint venture between two contractors. They're dotting the i's, crossing the t's. I think once that's done, you're going to see a rapid and probably robust mobilization, which will be, I would think, better than a two-year timeline before we see substantial completion. It is, I'm not sure that we'll see two berths within two years, and I'm just speaking freely. The plan calls for a loadout berth where the existing deepwater berth is, and then along the jetty, a receiving berth. I think the receiving berth is just going to be challenging to get in there, so that timeline might be a little bit longer. We were able, along with the harbor usage fee this winter, to negotiate a warfing rights agreement, and that allows us to bring in city-sponsored MTSA vessels, which would be cruise ships. That's who we're targeting. The tricky part right now is timeline. I'll have a better idea when we can start booking those, once we get started and have a realistic end game for the completion of the terminal. As the berth sits right now with the mooring appliances, I would deem it not suitable to bring a vessel of any size alongside, and the access itself, the passenger access itself, would not be suitable. But I do see, in say, three years' time, a larger tier cruise ship, and it'd be between now and then, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but we've been using the North Berth, which was a capital improvement project a few years ago, for large commercial yachts and small cruise ships. In fact, there is the replica schooner, Fishing Schooner Columbia, which has leased it for the summer. So off and on, but they took one side for the entire summer. They know when they vacate, I'm allowed to rent it to somebody else.
You touched on earlier a harbor usage fee for incoming vessels. Is that going to be by the size of the vessel, the weight of the vessel, whether it's a commercial or a pro? How does the parameters work, and what kind of a fee is that going to be?
The fee is a scaled fee, and it is not associated with construction vessels. It's associated with offshore wind vessels coming in to utilize the terminal, and it will be based on length and registry. So it goes up a scale of length, and then once it gets to foreign registry, it's the highest rate, which is $2,500 per arrival. So arrival is when they take arrival Salem, and that arrival is considered to be complete when they take departure. And that is a specific term in maritime nomenclature, which they have to log. So it's up to us to do the billing, but it's up to Crowley as the operator or their agent to provide us with all the information on the ship prior to arrival, including IMO number and any pertinent data that we need to build that ship. As a note, I've already billed the sea installer for the last arrival.
And the Harbor Master Department is one of the few departments that actually generates funds for the city, and through the mooring fees, and especially now with the boat storage. Could you touch on how many boats were stored over the wintertime and how much money the city made on that storage?
Yeah. We had roughly 170 boats stored there, and I think the, I think we took in somewhere around $110,000. That is, quite frankly, what pays the bills when it comes to matches for grant writing, capital improvements, and as well as, you know, sometimes you're not going to get a grant, but you need new propulsion units, new engines, that's what pays for it. That, you know, our operating budget is fairly lean and mean. If we have a casualty midsummer, we can utilize those funds, and that's very important for refurbishing things and getting them back online. So that does really work well for us.
Yeah.
It's a little arduous to administrate, but it's well worth it because it does pay the bills.
Big difference in numbers from a few years ago, too, so that's off to you for that. Last question, should be an easy one. How long is the waitlist to get a mooring in Salem Harbor now?
Depends on the size of boat. One to three years is what we tell people. Outside, now if you're a Jubilee Yacht Club member, your fellow members are getting larger boats every day. We're balancing upgrades with new assignments. They pick their launch area. So they're between Monument Bar and the bridge. You can only fit so many boats in there, and we share it with Beverly. So we automatically tell those people when they're applying there that it's going to be a substantial wait. If you come in with a 42-foot sailboat with a deep draft, you could be waiting 10 years. If you come in with a 17-foot whaler and you're in the right spot, maybe it's a year and a half or two. The other part, the other area that is kind of sought after is M area, down by Palmer Cove Yacht Club and Forest River. And I like to say there's plenty of water, but it's not so deep. So that does restrict what we can put down there. We offered a mooring to someone that was on the list with a sailboat, and he didn't feel comfortable. He had plenty of water. He didn't feel comfortable, so he passed it up. He came back to me this year and said, "I'm ready." I'm like, I gave that spot away, you know? So it all depends where you are, what type of vessel you have.
Thanks, and thanks for the bang-up job you do. Very, very well done. Thank you, Bill.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Any questions from other councilors? No? Okay. I also want to echo what has been said. Yours was a position when I attended a first budget hearing that I didn't know much about, and it was very interesting to hear about the large scope of your job, and that was without an offshore wind terminal. So very much appreciated. Thank you. Councillor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to echo the gratitude. You have a lot going on and a very level-funded budget. I'm not quite sure how you do it, so thank you very much for all that you do. So I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the Harbor Master budget. Personnel total of $379,108, and a expenditure total of $60,299, for a departmental total of $439,407.
Councillor Stott moves to recommend approval of the personal budget for the Harbor Master in the amount of $379,108, and the expenditures budget in the amount of $60,299, for a total department budget of $439,407, seconded by Councillor Pozniewski. All those in favor? I see three hands plus my own, so this passes 4 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Fire Department, and this is Section 12, and the budget summary page is 426. And also, like I had said, if you want to speak to any capital improvement projects, that's at the bottom of Page 261. So we'll start with the, yes, the expenses and personnel and the overview.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Being the third largest budget in the city, I'd like to take a few minutes and tell you a little bit about what's happening in the department, and I think it's a necessary step so that people can see what we're getting, our bang for the buck here. I'll start with some data information, and then go into the basic state of the department, some long-term planning, capital improvements, and finally, key areas of the budget, including the challenges that we're currently facing at the Fire Department. So I'll go through the data a little quickly, but it's definitely relevant here. As always, we're very busy in the fiscal year, the calendar year of 2023. We had a total of 7,790 calls for service. Those are calls where we actually left the building. The number of calls far surpasses that, but we did a lot of calls. The bulk of them were 4,678 medicals. The key point to remember with the medicals is we're the first on scene almost always. The police are on the road and usually in position better than us, so when I say always, I'm relating to the arrival time of the private ambulance company. That was not always the case since the implementation of data and technology, a new CAD system, better dispatch procedures. We've shaved at least four minutes to six minutes off most of our dispatch time, and I'm really proud that that's happened. And it was, you know, the result of a lot of hard work and a lot of expenses that went into it. And as a result, you're getting some of the best medical care you can get in a community our size with a really good private ambulance company, and firefighters most have been EMTs now for more than 15 years, so the experience level is there, and you get the quality care that you'll need. Our department at one time was very low-manning for EMTs, and now we have almost 96% of our department are EMTs. It's a requirement when you join the job that you do get your EMT within a year. I'd like to commend Atlantic Cataldo for their efforts. When I took over three and a half years ago, it was not so easy. We were all suffering through Cataldo along with, excuse me, through COVID, and Cataldo was no exception. They dealt with some pretty difficult manning issues, and as a result, we had really high response times, and it was very, very difficult. They rebuilt the model, along with the assistance of myself, the fire chiefs from Marblehead and Swamska, and we came up with fly cars. You've seen them around the community. They're just Atlantic vehicles. Instead of having advanced care medics driving in an ambulance and transporting, we put them in fly cars, and they get there very quickly, and they can provide the advanced care that the ambulances and the fire trucks cannot. In the event that they need to go with the transport, then they're in a position to just jump on that BLS unit and go along with their gear. That alone has changed response times for ALS exponentially, and we couldn't say better things than you'd want to hear from the performance of Atlantic Cataldo, so I just wanted to commend them. The next most common area of response for the Fire Department, we respond to almost $1,100, $1,100 alarms, alarm activations. Those include malicious alarms, malfunctioning systems, unintentional activations, and smells in bowels and odors and the like. Last year, we had 120 major fires, and what I deem a major fire is any fire where two trucks and a ladder had to work hard to put it out, whether it was a car fire, a building fire, or anything of significance that could potentially extend and cause a lot of damage. We had three two-lam fires and 11 working fires, and we had two, what I consider extraordinary saves, where we were able to enter into apartments in both cases and remove victims and save their lives. One victim was resuscitated on the sidewalk of Lafayette Street and is still walking and breathing the streets of Salem today. So there is a reward, a result, when you have the troops there as quickly as they are, as well-equipped as they are, and as well-skilled as they are. It shows immediately. A lot of people will say to me, "I haven't seen a lot of big fires in Salem lately," and I says, "That's correct. You have not." That's because we're there quickly. We're in four corners of the city. Trucks, our response time is averaging three minutes or less if we're in quarters. If we're out of quarters, there's a little delay for the next available company to arrive. If you get a phone alarm for a room fire and you're there in three and a half minutes, you're going to put that room fire out quite quickly, and we have a lot of those types of incidents, and it really shows when you have a good fire department, well-funded, well-equipped, well-manned. So that's the result. You see other fires in communities, and I'm not shotting them. They have a lot of issues that we don't face. Call of all departments don't have manning. They're looking at 12, 16, 18-minute response times. They're not going to stop a fire. They're going to sit there and protect the exposures. So that's the benefits that we see with those types of calls. Our Fire Prevention Division is very active. We do generate fees. We generate a lot of fees, and we'll be discussing that later this week. We have over 50 different areas that we draw revenues from, and we also go out and inspect in relation to those permits and fees. So there is a revenue source in the fire service, believe it or not, so I wanted to mention that. Last year, we processed over 4,000 permits. Those all drew in revenues. We completed 3,000 inspections. These are the fire marshal and his two inspectors. They do a lot of work, and they got out there a lot, and the inspections are part of the permits. I don't want to let you think that we're charging for those as well. Our in-service inspections are done by fire companies themselves. You've seen them out on the streets. They park the trucks, they go into the stores, the residence, the buildings, and they conduct a safety inspection, and they log that onto the tablet system, and emails are sent to the property owners. Those are relevant in many ways, but most importantly, they affect public safety, and we don't go there citating, writing citations and the like. We go there to advise and counsel. It also affords the fire companies an opportunity to get into the buildings that they serve in their districts, and that's very valuable. So when we have that call in the middle of the night, we know where the back stairway doorway is, or we need to assist it in medical. We are very familiar with the building. So those are the benefits of a good fire inspection system. Fire inspections aren't sexy, but they save lives, property, and they serve a lot of function. And lastly, regarding the statistics, Salem Fire Dispatch, they're kind of the unsung heroes, as my counterpart will tell you about the Police Department. Their numbers, I'm sure, are much higher. We employ five full-skill, full-time firefighters and three per diems. Last year, they answered 22,882 calls for service, information, or other. That's unbelievable. That's 2,000 calls a month. That does not include calls, direct calls from the police ring down line or the ambulance. So they're a busy department. They're union employees out of the ASME union, and they are true professionals, and they do an extraordinary job. They also answer all these calls while communicating with the fire trucks and the fire apparatus and the ambulance companies on our frequency. So the fire service is well-served in Salem by our fire dispatch. The supervisor, Sean Lerner, deserves a pat on the back. I'm done with the statistics, so I want to tell you a few things that changed in the Fire Department since July 21st, July 1st, 2020, well, last July 1st, let's say that. We incorporated, for the first time ever in our department, an administrative deputy chief. Peter Shablon took over that role. Most of us know he was the former fire marshal, an extraordinary employee, and it's been a game changer for our department. Deputy Shablon, he directs our training, including an onsite academy program that we collaborate with the Fire Academy. we collaborate with the Fire Academy in Salem State. We use those facilities often. They're perfect for academy training, which brings a lot more training to the North Shore instead of our recruits having to drive down to Stowe or our firefighters having to drive to Stowe to take classes. Peter has brought many of them up here to Salem when we were on our own training here, which saves us travel time, gas money, and all the like that we're fixed to reimburse. He does numerous officer training classes, daily in-service drills. He's doing a great job on that part of the function. And most importantly, we're raising the professional standards recognition for our department to a level it should be. Looking at the department, we're deficient in all our standards in every way. Our SOGs are ten, twelve, fifteen years old. We're incorporating them through a program called Lexpo that was funded last year through the council. Thank you very much, and it will be an annual subscription to this program. And everything we do, eat, breathe, and sleep in the fire service, will be related to the operation of this, and it will certainly incorporate professional standards to a level that the Salem Fire Department deserves and the public should demand. Relocating fire prevention, as some of you may have seen, we closed down the offices of fire prevention on Fort Ave. That was due in part to two or three items, and I'll speak to all of them. First and foremost, the building is falling down. It hasn't been remodeled or renovated since nineteen fifty-six, when it was built, and you can imagine any old schoolhouse you've been in that is that old and falling down and dilapidated, this was worse. In the same light, it was filthy. It was just, there was mold, there's odors, and one night, somebody drove by and shot out all the windows with pellet guns, so that was kind of the final straw. Other items that I kind of looked at, with the office hours are very difficult to man down there because we would try to be open from seven-thirty to nine and two to four, but the inspectors are out all day. As you can see, by doing three thousand inspections a year, they need to be on the road, yet it's hard to man hours. In days gone by, there would be many people down at the Fire Prevention Office daily filling out permit requests and the like. That's no longer the case. Eighty-nine to ninety percent of what they deal with is online, and the rest is basically on the phone. So there was really no need for anybody to be sitting down there, and so I chose to do a light renovation at Fire Headquarters on the second level and move them into two large offices there, and we now have all the fire administration operating out of the administrative wing on Forty-Eight Lafayette Street. It's just a better model, and I think it works better. And in the same light, we now have office hours. When anybody wants to come in during regular hours, they can see either myself or Ashley or the three of the fire inspectors who might be upstairs or my assistant chief. So the expansion of services was just a bonus from that move. If you don't like that mind, I'd like to speak to capital improvements. Since taking over the chief three and a half years ago, my goal was to initiate an aggressive capital improvement plan. We have five fire stations, including the one I just mentioned, Station Six.
Captain Dion, can you just wait till we, I just would like to get to that page before you start the capital improvement. Thanks.
Okay. I wasn't going to speak specifically to items. That would be at the end.
Oh, okay. Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
Just giving you the overall projection of our overall plan, and I'll continue with.
Okay, great. Thanks.
My apologies. We have a plan for all five stations. We have a fleet of apparatus, six apparatus plus a spare. We have thirteen vehicles, and it's quite extensive to take care of these and maintain them. Like, when we took over, most of them were in great disrepair, in need of replacement. The council's been very generous and supported my initiatives to do just that, and we're glad to say that. There's too many products to list here that we've done in the stations, but in the last three and a half years, I believe we've done close to four million dollars' worth of repairs to the stations through different funding sources, projects that were initiated or funded prior to my arrival, and I continue through to keep expanding on those projects. Very briefly, I won't tell you about them all. I'll tell you the ones that were just recently completed. The roof at Station Four was restored. Chimney was pointed and recapped. All water infiltration at that building is stopped. The exterior drainage system was completely rehabbed with the help of the DPW. We cleaned all the drains, repaired them. That building has flooded for fifteen years. It's bone-dry now for three months, so it was money well-spent. We're putting a resin floor up there as soon as the weather's dry enough to do so. Station Five, the roof is working there as I speak this month. They will cap that building and make it weather-tight for years to come. The exterior renovation of the driveway, the front ramp and the sidewalks has all been completed. Exterior doors, the man doors, will all be changed out in this next ten days, and you'll notice very shortly there'll be new overhead doors that the trucks come in and out of. The ones that are there are twenty years old, and they leak, and they're all broken, so these doors are going to be somewhat more suitable to that type of building, age-familiar and the like. They'll be really good-looking doors, and they'll be fast-open, fast-close, which will save money. And Headquarters, finally, we're working on our ADA bathroom. If anybody's been over there recently, it's been a hot mess. They've been jackhammering the floors. They get all the plumbing's done. They're working on that. And on the second level, immediately above it, we've taken an office and a bathroom and making a female locker room. So that's been one of my p's. I promised that to Patty Moffin-Jelly that before I retired, I would have a female locker room, and she'll see that before I retire, not that I'm going to retire. And as I mentioned earlier, the second floor admin went underwent basically a cosmetic renovation, but we did a lot of work, so that's all been done. Very briefly, the apparatus, which is the backbone of our department, other than the firefighters and our dispatches. Ladder one was delivered in the spring. We had a great dedication ceremony. Thanks to everybody that came. Engine one was put in, actually, the dedication was done at the end of the winter. Engine one was put in service last spring, right around this time. It's serving us well, and we're replacing this year a twenty-two-year-old service pickup, which I'll speak to at the end. Radio project is still underway. This has been, I've been working on this for almost four and a half, five years now, even before I was chief. They are in the procurement process. They're starting to fill warehouses with equipment that they'll have to install, and once they have what they need to get started, we'll start to see the project move. They still are promising a completion sometime next winter, so don't hold your breath, but I'm hoping. And sustainability initiatives, we're very involved, working with Neil Duffy and his team for sustainability. We have some low-hanging fruit with the Fire Department, some of the oldest heating systems in the entire city, old steam boilers and the like. Window air conditioners in every single window and lighting that just would boggle your mind as to what we spend on these. So we're working to advance projects to replace all the heating and air conditioning in the three outside stations through sustainability initiatives. We're also working to replace lighting in Headquarters, which is very, very expensive, and then air infiltration projects and the like. So that's certainly a major initiative that I've been involved with. Offshore wind, if you'll indulge me, I too would like to commend my counterpart, Bill McHugh. I'm very involved in the project, as well as Chief Miller, but Bill's the man. This is happening, and it's going to happen in the right way it should because Bill McHugh's involved, and I tip my hat to him. The Fire Department is equally as involved. There's a lot for us to be involved in down there, including public safety initiatives, insisting that they follow the regulations that are mandated for those types of projects, so we are involved as well, and we'll ensure that the project is run in a safe manner. Manning, very briefly, we have been fully manned for twenty-one months. When I took over, we were down eleven bodies. I continue to work hard to have a reserve list always in place, always, so when somebody retires, I have a name and a face to come in the door the very next day, and that is huge. I can get them into the academy a lot faster, and there's longer, less delays in putting them on the front line on the trucks. This saves a huge amount of money on overtime, and when you were down eleven people, we spent a lot of money. So that's really important that we're doing that, and it will continue to do so. Diversity in the department. I'm working to hire more women. We did some interviews just recently, and we're interviewing another woman who would like to transfer into Salem from an unnamed department, and she's an excellent candidate, and I think we're going to get her. She'll be the first woman to come onto our department since Patty Moffin-Jelly and Aaron Griffin left, so I'm very excited about that. On the reserve list, we have presently two females in the top ten positions of the reserve list. Not, excuse me, I misspoke on the civil service list. I have to go in a particular order. I cannot jump around even to get to a woman, but I will get to them. They will get an interview, and if they meet the standards, they will be on the reserve list and eventually hired. So that's the good news. And the total of Spanish speakers we have are eleven, and that's excellent for our department. And some of those civil service candidates of the eleven I mentioned, two of them are Spanish speakers, so the future looks bright for Spanish speakers in the Fire Department. They're a vital link to this community and to our department efforts, so I'm excited to possibly have a few more. Future planning, I have a lot of plans. I won't go into all of them, but some things that are on the horizon. The PFAS chemicals that are jackets, exhausts, have been found to be carcinogens, and they're the number-one cause in firefighter cancers now, which is disgusting, considering all that we're exposed to, and we find out that most of the cancer the guys are getting now is from their gear. So we have an initiative to replace jackets with high-vis jackets. I wrote a grant, so you'll see them very shortly, probably by the end of the summer, where the firefighters will be wearing high-vis jackets. They'll have a red feature to them, and they'll be used in light of putting on your turnout gear on a cold night for a medical and so forth. We're going to try to put the turnout gear on a little bit less, and hopefully that will lessen their exposure until replacements can be found for these chemicals. In the same light, I'm looking next year in the budget I'm going to submit to replace all the lockers in all the four stations so that the gear can be hung in open air lockers, and they can continue to ventilate, whether from chemicals from a fire or just from these PFAS gases that actually accumulate in the lockers and then get into the gear. So that's something that I'm going to prioritize next year to put that firefighter safety initiative right to the forefront. The station areas will continue to do improvements. I wrote a community benefit development grant, and I'm hoping to get some work done on the windows at Station Four. They're older than City Hall windows, and they've never been rehabbed ever, and they're just, the last, last point of infiltration is that. So that's a project I'll be working on. And my last item, that's kind of depressing and expensive, Ladder Two is now twelve years old. We really need to be considering replacing a ladder before it's seventeen to twenty years old, and it takes three years to build a ladder. So that forewarned, I'll be here in 2027 fiscal year. Capital asking to purchase that ladder and get that started because it'll be three years to replace it, so I don't want to come in and surprise anybody. As far as the rest of the apparatus, I do have a plan that I developed, and I think I shared it with Anna, to replace our apparatus on a schedule so that we're not waiting for them to be problems and then replace them. We're developing a program, and we build that into the budget. Our present challenges, when I took over, Engine One came in, and we took the old Engine One and made that a reserve truck. It's twenty-one years old, and every department needs a reserve pump. The twenty-one-year-old pump was perfect for its role. It could be used if a truck needed maintenance or had a failure or the like. Unfortunately, Engine Four started to have, which is also an older truck, but it's just fifteen years old. That was the truck I was hoping to eventually move to a reserve position. Our Engine Four will be replaced with a new pump, which was ordered and will be delivered next fall, not this upcoming fall, the following fall. They take a long time to build. Well, the Engine Four that we had hoped to move into the reserve position suffered a catastrophic failure on the frame in the back and has been condemned, so we cannot use that truck any longer. So I looked at some options into repairing it or purchasing other used vehicles, and there is no options to do any of that anywhere at this time. So that Engine One truck is now running permanently as a frontline truck. Again, it's a twenty-one-year-old truck, and it's running as Engine Four. We do not have a reserve pump, and there is no reserve pumps in the region, so that's a critical challenge we're facing. Just recently, the water pump on that truck broke, and I was able to put Ladder One in service in its place, but ideally, we would always have four pumps in service. But we can rely on mutual aid if we were to have overlapping incidents, and the mutual aid pumps could come in and cover us. But that's the biggest challenge I'm facing with this department right now, so we're going to have to limp through until that new fire pump is delivered next year. And that's it. I'll speak to the Capitol if anybody wants to look at that section. Now, I don't have the page. Yeah, yeah, there is overlaps in tabs. When I first saw it, I thought they omitted a few items, and I looked up to the tab above. So there's not a lot of big-money items. Primarily, there's not a fire truck this year. There has been one every year since they've started, so we're just looking to finish up some projects. The weather infiltration is part of the sustainability project to try to make the stations a little more economical to operate. There's a section for lighting for forty-three thousand. In addition to that, that project comes with grants that expire this year, so that's why we were able to get that into the capital budget. And the project to remove the lighting and reinstall it at Headquarters is going to be close to eighty thousand, so you get an idea of what the grants will pay, so it's certainly worth getting that done. The station upgrades is an annual fund that we use to continually repair floors, doors, windows, and the like, but not just repair, but modernize. I did use some of that money to remodel the second level at Headquarters this year for the fire prevention offices. The ADA work is ongoing. I'm working on an ADA bathroom as we speak in Fire Headquarters, and there'll be more projects to the like. And then the last and largest, well, is the rescue vehicle. Presently, we have a twenty-two-year-old pickup truck, and we use that kind of as our utility squad, and the back is filled with dive gear and the like. We're looking to put what I call a light rescue together, where we'll take most of our rope rescue gear, our trench rescue gear, confined space gear, and dive gear, and put it all on this light rescue vehicle and free up some space in the apparatus. The trucks adjust stuff to the point where it doesn't make sense, and this is low-frequency use gear, but you absolutely still need it in the event of a call. That truck will be deployed, and they'll have everything you need in that light. It just means that it'll be coming on a different vehicle. This truck would also still serve the function of pulling the boat to water rescues, mostly off-season when the harbor mask is not readily available and the like. So that's the nature of our thought behind purchasing that vehicle. And also, the last thing is the Lucas CPR device. I bought those for every apparatus through an upper funding grant that the city provided us, and they're close to twenty-one thousand dollars by the time you buy everything. And those CPR machines, if you've seen them, you can Google it, Lucas CPR, and watch the videos. They're amazing. They allow us to strap a CPR machine onto a victim and a backboard, and we can carry them vertical down a stairway, and they're still getting CPR compressions. They can get CPR every second of the way to the hospital and the like, and they save lives on a regular basis, almost daily in this country. And I'll tell you, in Salem, we've used them successfully fifteen or twenty times since we purchased the first bunch of machines. So we have one in every truck, but now we have our brand-new Ladder One, which doesn't have one, so I would like to put one on Ladder One. That's all my capital requests. So in closing, on behalf of the entire Salem Fire Department, I'd like to extend our deepest gratitudes on behalf of the department for your continued support and commitment. Your unwavering dedication to our department has enabled us to serve this community with the highest level of safety and efficiency. The resources and trust you have provided us are invaluable, and we are profoundly thankful for your ongoing partnership. Together, we will continue to protect and serve the citizens of Salem with excellence and pride. Thank you for listening.
I just have to say, wow, that was just, the work you're doing is just incredible. I wouldn't even know where to start. Thank you for you and your teams. That's just a phenomenal amount of incredible life-saving and incredibly impactful work. I was glad to hear your high praise for Cataldo and also the female locker room. I know your ongoing efforts to recruit more women, and it's also so frightening to hear about, you know, the gear, you know, the cancer-causing gear. That was just horrific, but yeah, just incredible gratitude, the efforts you've done for your reduction in response times, and yeah, it's, that was really, really incredible. Thank you. Counselor Cohen, I believe, had his hand up first.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Not being a member of the committee, through you to the chief. I just got three things. Couple of years ago, as we talked about before the meeting, you and the police chief put in money that we allocated for the radios, and could you speak a little bit to how that's improved the response time?
The radio project is still not, has not, hasn't done anything yet. The project is still waiting for implementation. We're still in procurement. There's a shortage of technology and equipment nationwide, even traffic signals. It takes five months to order them. Fire trucks, three years, and radio parts in the same light. I hope we're going to start to have the construction start at the three satellite sites where the microwave dishes will be mounted on high-rises throughout the city and all the buildings that will be, the doghouses and the like that'll be on the roofs that'll be put on those buildings, those will be built shortly. As far as the work in the stations, once that starts, it's going to have to go fast and hard because there can't be too much overlap. So once it happens, we'll see the benefit. We'll spend a lot less. We'll spend a lot less, I believe, between police and fire, we operate nine or 10 repeater sites. Each repeater site has two phone lines, which we pay for. Verizon's getting out of the copper line business, so we would have to buy a cable TV line or fiber optic line and pay for all that to be converted. So there's not a lot of options to do in this radio project. And the savings will come from, A, not maintaining these old sites. We will have three microwave sites and two receiver sites, police and fire, and that'll be it. The maintenance and care of this equipment will be much cheaper. We spend a lot of money when we call the contractors in to keep this old, old equipment running. So we're not reaping the benefits right now, honestly, Counselor, but we will in the future.
Okay, thank you. Really grateful for your personal effort on your own time and hustling with other communities on the salvage project for Ukraine. And I don't know if this is a question for you or for the finance director, do we realize any financial benefit by salvaging those vehicles?
Are you speaking just about vehicles, surplusing vehicles in general or any specific vehicles? So in general, yes, any, any vehicle that's declared surplus to the extent that we're able to, if there's a buyer for it as a whole or in parts, yes, we take that money and it's general fund money. And so it's sort of, there's a baseline that we bake into, to budget against in the budget generally, and anything that comes in above that would close out to free cash and then be available for, to potentially help capitalize future capital projects.
Great. And lastly, just on the sustainability side, it's really inviting. You have a lot of buildings with high ceilings and no insulation and it was horrifying to hear about how the, you know, chemicals affect, you know, the people who work for you. And I will say this, when you do install the heat pumps, they do filter allergens. So, I mean, unless people have them in their home, you don't realize it, but it really does make the air quality different. I'm not saying it's going to fix things, but in addition to creating a more efficient heating and cooling, it might help a little bit in that process. So thank you for that.
Sounds good to me, Counselor. And if I could speak to your second point, the Engine 4 still has some inherent value. It's only 15 years old and the frame shouldn't have broken the manner that it did. So I am willing to work with Anthony Delaney in procurement and we'll get that up on some auction sites, but you know, generally you don't get good bids, but we'll set our heights pretty high, our sites pretty high, and we're going to try to get as much money as we can for the truck. I haven't thrown in the towel yet as to possibly having it rebuilt. It just needs a new chassis. If they're going to do that and then they could rehab a lot of the stuff, we could get another 10, 12 years out of it. So I haven't given up on that yet, but right now, there's just not a lot of companies looking to do that. And if they are doing that, I'm not the only fire department in this country that's looking for a fire truck and everybody is trying to rebuild old trucks. There's nobody available, they're two, three years out and they want a lot of money because they're in demand. So it's a challenge there.
Counselor Varela?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Through you to Chief, thank you for what you do, I appreciate it. I just had a quick question, since it seems like it's the biggest expenditure that was not approved by the mayor for equipment lease for $87,973. Are you able to talk about that a little bit? I'm assuming this is not Daddy Pangalo spanking you, but I'm sure a change in, are you able to justify, I know that it seems like it's been a consistent line item for the last many years, and I guess my question, sorry, is since that line item is not there and the mayor didn't approve it, are we going to be looking, are you going to be looking for an appropriation this year or next year? I guess that's my general question.
This is actually good news, Counselor.
Yeah, so this, actually, the chief and I were very thrilled when we went and looked, this was a seven-year lease for a pump truck, I believe, and we realized that the current year is the final year. And so we were thrilled when we realized that next year, the lease payment is rolling off, so that resulted in substantial savings. So that's why overall, the fire department's expenditure budget, it looks like a decrease, but it's not, it's not really a cut, it's just that something rolled off.
Considered a decrease.
Counselor Musillo?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the very thorough explanation of what's going on in your department. I have to say, I'm disappointed that another year has gone by without any female firefighters being hired. I know. You mentioned a list that you had of people that you're ready to, ready to hire. Are there any women on that list?
Yeah, the civil service list comes out every year. When people test, it takes about 10 weeks for the process to release the list. It was just released April 15th and then it has to be, go through an appeals process. So now it's coming into activity. So I can request what we would call a hire list and they would come in and start the process to be considered for interviews and the like. And on that section, the top 10, there's two women in the top 10. I'd be looking to at least fill six reserve positions on the department with the permission of the mayor's office. And once I commence with that, I'm almost certain I can get to both of those women if they choose to continue with the process once they get into it. I've had two women that in the past have started with the process and have chose not to continue. I will do everything in my power to keep them in the process. And one of them has been in my office, letting me know that she is very interested. So I'm very encouraged that she would stay with the process and continue to try to become a firefighter. So yes, it's encouraging, there's two on the horizon and I will certainly work to get this started. Sometime in the early summer, we'll start calling in people to fill out applications. On average, it takes us 110 days from the time we put out a call for people off the civil service list to move them to hire on the reserve list. It's an extensive, lengthy process involving interviews, application reviews, background checks, medical tests, psychological evaluation, physical evaluations, strength and agility. It's not just, you know, an interview, come on and start working, it takes a long, long time. So once I get the process started and they're on that, even if, if something were to timeout, they're in the process, they won't lose their spot with me and will continue until that list is exhausted. So that's why I'm encouraged and I'm hoping that they will both stay with the process.
Is there any plan regionally to do more outreach to women in like the high school level? I mean, it's just...
In Salem, we have, working with Rahina, we have received some funding through a grant where we're going to change, or going to create and develop through a consulting firm, some recruiting initiatives. And that would be at the top of my list for Salem. It'll happen, as soon as we, Chief Miller and myself are involved, we're Rahina and we're going to come up with some plans to recruit the types of candidates that we think would be well-suited to be on the fire department. In the same light, there is some civil service reform where we're not going to, if we choose to adopt it as a community, it will take away a little bit of the rigidity of the process we're presently working through and following a step-by-step and only be able to hire from people. In the new process, they'll be separating in two different areas where we wouldn't limit our pool of candidates to just Salem, where we would be allowed to choose candidates for a larger area, which would certainly benefit us. And we could also tell what kind of candidates we want. If you have a college degree, you would get more consideration. If you had an EMT or paramedic, you'd get more consideration. If you speak Spanish, if you're a female, all these things could be added to the criteria consideration. So I have some concerns about the new possibility of changing civil service, but I'm also very encouraged. So regionally, I serve on the Board of Directors for the Fire Chiefs of Massachusetts and we talk about this often, we're not the only community that struggles to find females in the fire service. And nationwide, there's been a real decline. And in our state, I know there is initiative to get the word out when we do the civil service advertisements, we're getting them, my community, we get them to the schools early. I send items to the principal and he gets them out to his students. We were just up at the job fair and we spoke to hundreds of kids, hundreds. They're just an amazing group of people and they were very excited to hear that they could be on the fire department, our Spanish speakers, our female kids. And so, yeah, we're working hard and we're trying to encourage the types of people that we feel the city in this department need to serve our residents that we want to resemble.
So when you talk about changes to the civil service, how is that approved? How does that go through? How does that work?
I believe if the mayor could help me on this one, I think it still has to go to the legislative rate. We recently have been working on this together.
So there's legislation right now in Boston that would reform civil service and allow communities to have a mixed approach to hiring police and fire so that we'd have more flexibility in crafting lists that met our local needs instead of the requirements imposed by the states.
What's the likelihood that that will get any traction this, this year?
I'm actually optimistic about it. I think it's a high priority. MMA has prioritized it. There is a long list of cities and towns looking to get out of civil service and so I think there's a perspective by some in the legislature that reform legislation is a way to kind of slow down that rush to get out of the system altogether and try to keep the state program operating in a modified version that's a little bit more responsive to the challenges that communities are facing right now.
So it's been reported out favorably, I'm assuming?
It's gone out of one committee, I think it may be in Ways and Means now, so, but it's making progress, more progress than I think, than it would if it weren't likely to move forward.
I mean, we only have until the end of July, right?
Yeah, another month.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Watsonfeld?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Not being a member of the committee, through you to the chief. I ask this question every year. But first, let me start by saying, chief, you know how incredibly highly I hold you and my respect and all the work that your team does. I think that we are blessed in this town with incredible emergency responders, both with police and fire, and I'm a big fan personally. And thank you for all your work. So here's the question. How many speakers of American Sign Language do you have on your team?
I don't believe I have one.
So every year I ask this question because I know that there are children in Ward 2 residents who are nonverbal, who speak only in sign, and in the case of an emergency, I think about them a lot. So just one more plea, one more year to get somebody trained in ASL. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mayor Pangalo?
To respond quickly to that, so we are hoping to, we have the conversational Spanish class for employees. We're hoping to add an ASL class for city employees this year, so it would be available to the fire department as well as all city employees.
I'm positive I could get some people interested in taking that if it were to become available. Some of our folks have been taking part in the Spanish classes here at the city, some of our, and many of mine have signed up for the translator program as well, which they would be compensated to serve in various roles in the community as translators. That should become part of it, I believe.
Excellent, I'm so happy to hear it. Thank you both. Yes, thank you, Mayor Pangalo. I enjoyed the Spanish course myself and I'm thrilled to hear that it's branching out in much-needed ways, so appreciate that. Counselor Hapward, did you have some question?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Chief, there's a few storms this year, as you know, that cut off certain neighborhoods from city services, from emergency services. Is there anything in this budget that deals with the effects of climate change and the city's response to that?
Specifically, I would, I would hesitate to say yes at all. We're not looking to procure any additional equipment. If you don't mind, I'll speak to the idea of a high-water rescue vehicle that was brought to my office several times and also the role I serve as emergency management director. I would have to consider that. I have some counterparts up in Salisbury and Gloucester who have neighborhoods that when these tides come in, they're absolutely cut off, hundreds and hundreds of houses, locations where they can't get to and the like, and people may need evacuation. Where our neighborhoods that are cut off, and I'll use the Willows as an example, there's still ways to get them in and out. We have the ability to put a wetsuit on and put two firefighters in waist-deep water and get someone out of an apartment or a home. And it's not hundreds and hundreds of homes, it's a couple dozen. So to pursue a high-water rescue vehicle is not something that I would recommend. The costs associated with it, the storage, the maintenance and the infrequency of its use would, it just to me doesn't seem advisable. We have two boats. If anybody was down the Willows for the last flood, I had four firefighters, they were in our Mustang wetsuits and they walked the neighborhoods with boats and checked on everything that was happening. And those are ideas that have been tested and used year after year. It's a great idea, a great way to rescue people, to get people out if they need to get out. And worst-case scenario, if we knew need to get someone, we can bring a dump truck in there and put them up on a step and get them out or the like. I don't see the need for anything heavy or high-water type. And related to the same topic, I have been working with the mayor's office and Counselor Dreszlo and a few others to possibly consider a secondary egress access to the Willows neighborhood through the Willows Park. And I think I spoke to Ollie about that. I think it's something we should continue to pursue. And if that's the case, then we can get to almost every side of that neighborhood in the event of flooding where the limit, to very, very limit the amount of time people have to go in water to get anybody out. So I'm still looking to pursue that avenue and hope we move forward with that.
Thank you, Chief. And I think that the, I appreciate those efforts. Would you say that if there were a, an event like we saw this, this past winter or even something potentially worse that cut off houses, would we be able to fight a fire in one of those neighborhoods if sort of a perfect storm happened where you had a neighborhood cut off from the roads and then potentially a fire or something that happened in that neighborhood?
Absolutely. I refuse to allow the fire trucks to go into any of that water, knowing what we pay for them, and they'll certainly have a shorter lifespan at once they're submerged in seawater and saltwater. And so we only will go in there if we have to. If a fire were to break out in any of those homes, we would bring the trucks in there and we will commence with firefighting operations. Would it be more challenging? Absolutely. Some of the existing hydrants may be harder to find, but we'll, we'll overcome and adapt and get the apparatus to the position they need to get to and we'll get the water on the fire, in effect rescues, should we have to. We could get, we could get pretty large trucks in there. Fortunately, we're not dealing with neck-high water at the worst, it's waist-high unless you go into a basement, so we will get the trucks in there. If it was any higher than we've been seeing, then it could be challenging. Yes, we can fight fires.
Thank you.
Counselor Musillo?
Thank you, Chair. Do you do training for that sort of thing? Is there training offered? I mean...
We train with our wetsuits and our wet water gear. Every summer, they do two or three drills. Oftentimes, they're down at the Harbor Boat Launch at the Winter Island and then we practice our skillset with that.
Okay, thank you. No more questions? Okay, again, thank you. You're very much appreciated, you and your team. Counselor Stott? And we are back on page 426. Section 12.
I'd like to just repeat the gratitudes of my fellow counselors. Thank you for all your work and you're the department that I hope I never have to call. So thank you. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the fire department personnel budget of $10,133,256, an expenditure budget of $477,449, for total department total of $10,610,705.
Second.
Thank you. Counselor Stott moves to recommend approval of the personnel budget for the fire department in the amount of $10,133,256, and the expenditure budget in the amount of $477,449, for a department total of $10,610,705, seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? So the record show, I see three hands plus my own, so if this measure passes, a four to zero.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you again. And next we have Chief Miller with the police department. And if it's amenable to everyone, I would like to take a two-minute recess. If that's okay. Motion for recess?
Second.
All in favor? I guess we have to do that? Thank you very much. Thank you, welcome back, everyone. We are moving on to the Salem Police Department, which is section 13. The budget summary's on 438 and if Chief Miller wants to review it, it is page 263, then on tab 7 for any capital improvement projects. And welcome, Chief Miller.
Thank you very much. I'd like to go over some of the budget increases briefly and then give you a little update as to the status of the department. Overall, the proposed budget represents a 2.37% increase or about 12%. Overall, the proposed budget represents a 2.37% increase or about approximately $304,000 over last year's budget. That contained within is a 2.14% increase to the personnel budget of approximately $253,000. And just to give you an idea, our personnel budget represents approximately 92.3% of the overall police budget. That increase is mostly taken up by the largest increase to my budget, which, as we discussed last year, is $162,000. It is that the police department is absorbing the crossing guards from the school department. So and then there's an additional $5,000 in equipment related to those crossing guards, which is shows in the 5.28% increase to our operating budget, which is a represents approximately a $50,000 increase. The operating budget is about 7.7% of our total budget. The rest of the increase is mostly due to contractual obligations and the approximate 4.1% rate of inflation this year. If you factor those in, our budget is pretty level. And although I believe represents a significant commitment to public safety by the Pangalo administration and hopefully this body as you have in the past. Currently, the police department employs 92 sworn officers. City ordinance suggests we should have 95. I have two officers ready to enter the police academy shortly after the first of July. There's another academy. We're just waiting for that academy to get going. I also anticipate two retirements this year, which will, I hope, to offset with three more new hires this year. And those partial year salaries are contained in the budget. I'm sorry? Aye aye. But of the hires that we were able to make this year and really since I've been police chief, despite the national trend, I'm really very proud of them. They're a very diverse, significantly diverse and really capable group of young officers. So I'm really, I'm very confident in our new hires. This year, we saw a 15% increase in calls for service. That I believe results from an overall recovery from the pandemic, which is a good thing, and the increased visitation to Salem. The sort of predictably, we did see an increase in property crime this year, a 9% increase in property crime. But an 18% decrease in crimes to persons. So I would call that an overall net win for public safety, but a slightly concerning statistic when it comes to that. It represents predominantly breaking and entering and larceny. We did see some rather significant cases this year, including two homicides, one non fatal shooting, three stabbings, a bombing, and the hate crime vandalism to the congregational church. Very proud to say that in all but one of these cases, we were able to make arrests for those crimes. And well, it's just it's another item that I'm very proud of in the police department. We discussed last year changes to our traffic division. We excuse me. We added an officer to traffic in January of 2023 and again in May of 2023. That resulted in an overall increase in motor vehicle citations of approximately 7%. I'm very pleased that there has been a commensurate decrease in traffic crashes, approximately a 5% decrease in traffic crashes over 2022. And if you look at just significant crashes, that is crashes reported to the RMV, not merely information exchanges on the scene, that number rises to a 22% drop. So really, I think that's another thing to be quite proud of. Another very favorable statistic, we had a very significant decrease in fatal overdoses in Salem. In 2022, we had 17. Thank you very much, counselor. In 2022, we had 17. In 2023, we had six. And, you know, I think there's a lot of there are a lot of different entities at work working on that. But in terms of the overall response and compassion within Salem, I think that's something to be proud of. I often talk about the numbers that are merely anecdotal, but I think where you have that big an increase, it represents real progress. More progress. Civilian complaints are down by 10%, down 10% over the previous year as well. I think I predominantly the body worn cameras are to thank for that. Some other items that that I we're working on as we speak into the into the new fiscal year, we're offering Citizens Police Academy two, which is to say the advanced program. We had a lot of requests for that. We're running one session right now, and we'll be offering an additional session in the fall. We you'll find in our overtime budget, a specific item for DEI training for the police department. The city's DEI director very generously tailored a version of the training that the whole city got specifically for the police department. And she's agreed to do that again in the new fiscal year. So, you know, I've talked about how important ongoing training in these matters is and we've had a good partnership with with Rehina Zarazova. We were also able to add a second part time animal control officer. We had a lot of requests for that, significant complaints about animal complaints, and that way we can we can cover more of the day and the week. We were able to purchase an additional drone and additional drone training due to a very generous gift by a member of our community. And, you know, that's a upcoming trend in policing. If you look at some of the models across the country, we haven't quite adopted a complete policy, but we have a very rudimentary one that will allow us to learn for ourselves. And then we also you'll find in the budget assessment centers for each rank. We're looking when we do promotions, we look to do a combination of a civil service test and an objective assessment. But but that does require paying an outside entity to come in and do that assessment. In terms of ongoing projects, I emailed you all about a project that the mayor and I discussed a long time ago, which is to add kind of a public address system downtown. We installed a temporary one. There was a there was a electronics outfit that offered to install one to let us see how we liked it. And there was some question as to whether we could get we could install something that would both have sufficient loudness to address people, but also have pretty good sound fidelity. And we think we've got it right. So in the near future, I'll be demonstrating that to the mayor and to anybody else who's interested, including this body. We've also you'll find in our CIP budget, a request for fast chargers. I think the Salem Police Department leads the city in implementation of zero emission vehicles. Currently, we have two full electric vehicles. We're somewhat limited by the amount of time they take to charge. So adding a fast charger, one that could charge a vehicle in about 45 minutes, would allow us to use a zero emission vehicle as a frontline police car. And we've also we're in the process of purchasing a car that we could that a suitable police car for a frontline vehicle. You know, the department has both what we think of as police cars and then unmarked cars and then our administrative vehicles. It's easy to make the administrative vehicles electric, but of course, most of the mileage goes on the frontline cars. So I think that's a that's an important milestone. And with that, I will take any questions.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Miller. And also thank you, you know, to you and your officers. I just hear great things and witnessed great work by your officers. And it's it's very much appreciated, really. It's it's a it's an honor to live in this community with with our with the first responders that we have.
Thank you.
And also, yeah, great to hear about the decrease in fatal overdoses. And I would wonder if that if the NARCAN training that you've done is I would be curious to know if you have noticed people, you know, just, you know, non police officers using them. I know I had the the training and also wanted to follow up. I've had requests, as you know, for people that that want the training in Salem. So I'm looking forward to the police holding another one, another training on that as well. And also, we had had the training by our DEI director as the city council, and it was excellent. I'm curious to about the 15% increase in calls for service. And you said it might be because it's the end of the pandemic. So I was curious to what those calls are and what makes them increase now that it's not the pandemic. Did people, you know, not were people in crisis, but hesitant to to not reach out? I was curious as to what you were referring to with that.
Well, my 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 analysis is based on on the number of calls we had for service before the pandemic. They dipped rather precipitously in 2019, 2020, and then have come back up not quite to the well, to the level we have now, which is just a little bit more than we had in, say, 2015, 2016. So, I mean, I think I think based on world events, that might be a good explanation. In terms of specific calls, they're pretty well distributed across all the calls we get. I mean, it really just does seem like more volume, more people in Salem causes more activity.
Okay, so it was just a lot of it was just the number, the volume of people in Salem is back up in general.
I think I think.
So I didn't know if residents just seemed less hesitant during COVID, or it's just the increase of people. Okay, thanks. I wasn't care what I wasn't sure what that was referring to. Any questions? Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Merkel, through you to the chief, not being a member of the committee. I just have a few thousand questions. First one regarding the EV charging.
Yes.
Some decent news because the Level One Charger, which is the fast charger, is basically just made by one or two companies. So it really limits how many vehicles can can use it. And there's actually a bill in the in the federal legislature to enable any EV company to participate. And I'm hoping that when you are able to secure the chargers, that there'll be something that will be shared with any municipal vehicle that needs them.
I you know, we're we're not there yet in terms of a policy. And you'll see in the CIP budget, there's also an item to look at rearranging our parking area to try to facilitate more access. So it I don't want to say yea or nay, but it's a distinct possibility.
Regarding the overdoses, there was actually an article in the Globe that Massachusetts has had a pretty good, I think, 10%. And, you know, I used to be on the citizens opiate task force. And last summer, myself, the task force and CIU unit restarted the Vigilum Walk, which is always, I think, the last Thursday in August. And I'm hoping that we can do that again because it's a good way for people to share their stories and show support. So hopefully, that's something we can do. I'll reach out to Sean and John about that. Regarding sustainability, you know, your station is ironically below sea level. And, you know, just like any emergency facility, we really need to move the equipment, you know, as high up as possible and potentially create a micro grid. So hopefully you'll work with Mr. Duffy about that.
Yes. And and there's another I don't want to jump to the CIP prematurely, but but there's another item in there about the rehabbing the generator that's in the back of the station. And one of that is one of the one of the part of the work is to make that higher and more resistant to storm damage.
Good. Really appreciate all the good work that the CIU unit does. Just want to recognize them. I think that really separates us from a lot of communities. And great to see more bikes on the point this summer, as you did last year. And I want to end on this one thing. I'm very appreciative of the of the collaboration between your department and you in particular, and Jason Etheridge and others in the camping ordinance.
Thank you.
I spend a lot of time interacting with people in the neighborhood of the transition center and actually some of the people who are temporarily living there. And, you know, there's been a couple of complaints, but in general, it seems to be, you know, serving the intent that we had and just wanted to see if you could just talk about that. I know it's not necessarily a permanent space, but it seems to have been, you know, a vehicle for us to get people into a into a safer space.
I think so. I think there has been some significant utilization of that temporary shelter and a decrease in the number of people sleeping in the encampment. I think in terms of, you know, work for the police department, we we, as promised, intend on a very compassionate enforcement of that ordinance, but that requires a lot of work. And as you mentioned, it will mostly fall to the CIU. I mentioned last year that we're we added two officers to the CIU, and I think that's been a that's been a very worthwhile addition. But they're they're gonna they're gonna earn their money this year. But I should point then to another item in the in the personnel budget, which is that I've requested a small stipend for the commander of the of the CIU unit in recognition of all the good work they did this year and all the good work they're going to do.
Mayor Pangalo?
Thanks. I just wanted to so on the first question about the fast charger and the use by the city vehicles, when sustainability comes in, they do have a capital allocation in here for a second fast charging station for other city vehicles that are not police vehicles. So we are hoping to provide that capacity for other EVs in the fleet. I don't know about that.
Counselor Watson felt I think you were next.
Thank you, Chair Merkel, through you not being a member of the committee to the chief. Chief, again, big fan of your work, big fan of the work of your leadership and the work of your team. I think that, as I said before, with the fire chief, Salem is is extremely lucky with although it is intentional, right? With our our public safety and emergency responders. So thank you for all your work and for all the work that the team does. As liaison to the Community Impact Unit, I want to echo the words of Counselor Cohen. This expanding that team is, in my mind, exactly the right place to put our money and our efforts and our focus in the community that we have currently and the work that is before all of us. So grateful for that ask last year. Happy to continue to support that. Same with the dogs and same with the expansion of the traffic and parking department, which I know we've got two additional folks that came in. I saw the notes and the summary that a lot of those folks will be deployed on bikes downtown to help with enforcement in our our higher peak period. So great, great to hear, great to see, and happy to share that with the downtown residents particularly. Same question to you as I asked the chief. How many members of the team are fluent in ASL?
One and one signed up for a course.
Awesome. Thank you for that. I really appreciate it. Excellent. Thanks.
Counselor Masilo?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chief. You have a great you have a great team. I do have a couple of questions. Can you talk a little bit about the $32,000 grant for the municipal road safety? I think that's what it was called municipal road safety grant. And the reason why I ask that is because in today's Salem news and the police log. Grant. And the reason why I ask that is because in today's Salem News and the police log, Beverly had what they called a grant shift. And it sounded like it was this kind of a grant where they gave out verbal and written warnings for things like crosswalk violations and distracted driving, things like that. Can you talk about how we're using it and where we've used it and what the outcome has been?
So we typically use that money to offer overtime officers to do traffic enforcement, not just our traffic division, but any patrol officer, any officer who would like to work extra hours doing enforcement. And we will move from concentration of violation to concentration of violation. So for instance, we might do crosswalk violations on one shift, or one group of shifts, one period where we offer this assignment. And it's not so much divided up by location in the city, but by type of violation that we're looking for. Not to say the officer is prevented from enforcing whatever violations he sees, but we like to see a specific concentration of those things. And we got the grant last year, and we got it again this year. So we'll be offering a similar, similar program.
Thank you. I wanted to just mention a, something that I ran into in East Boston. I was blocking the box. I know, I know. Long story, long story, but it was a huge intersection, whatever. The officer who was in a car with a light, like, whatever, I didn't know why he was there. But they just come up, they take a picture of your license plate. He came up to the window and he said, you will be getting a notice in the car, in the mail. Just went on to the next one. It was like violation after violation after violation. Didn't have to pull anybody over. It was all very nice. No one gave him any, you know, sass or anything. He just, and then a couple of days later, we got a written warning, which was, I was very thankful for that. And even though I was driving, I went to my husband, so I was like, okay. But like, I would love to see that. You don't have to pull anybody over. Riley Plaza, there's so many crosswalk violations, the blocking the box thing. We're getting more requests from residents to create these boxes, but without any enforcement, it's meaningless, right? And so it seemed like, you know, very simple, just went through and took pictures of the license plates. Is there, like, have we ever considered that?
I think the, we don't have anything like that in place. I think the limiting factor, or at least why I haven't been enthusiastic about something like that in the past, is something you mentioned, which is the violation goes to the owner of the car. And where, you know, that is, that's specifically a driver, error in attention, being in a hurry. But it is something I would consider. I mean, the blocking of a couple of intersections in Salem is a significant problem, and I'd be willing to explore that.
Yeah, I mean, especially if it's a written warning. It worked. I'm much more cognizant of boxes wherever. Okay, so I wanted to mention that.
May be an extraordinarily responsible driver in that violation.
I was just embarrassed that it happened. But anyways, I would love to see it for crosswalk violations too, though. Like, it just is so infuriating. Another question. There were three accidents with injuries on Broad Street, and I only know that because I lived there recently, in the past couple of weeks. None of them were reported in the police log in the Salem News. Not that that's your official registry, but it caused kind of talk in the neighborhood of cover-up. Like, we've been reporting issues on Broad Street, and of course, none of these accidents are appearing in the Salem News. So can you just talk about how they get that log information? Just how does it happen?
The, at the end of the shift, the officer in charge, there's a printout in our record-keeping system, which is then faxed to the Salem News. Sorry, emailed, scanned and emailed. But the scanning is like a fax. It's not, it's not that much, yeah. But I can imagine the reason why it might have been omitted is because the officer, you know, a significant accident does take a while for the officer to do the paperwork. If the officer wasn't done with the paperwork by the end of the shift, it should have gone in the next shift's message, but it's possible that's why it was omitted.
Okay, so generally, just at the end of the shift, like, they just send in the list. And then it's up to the Salem News to decide what they publish and what they don't publish, right? Okay. Believe me, I supported the city on this. It was like, there's no, there's nothing going on here. Another question on general enforcement of laws. And I'll give you an example, and it's nobody, I'm not like pointing any fingers, but there was a large truck, I don't know how many wheels, wasn't an 18-wheeler, but it wasn't small, parked on Highland Avenue, right in front of the crosswalk from 40R over to Salem Hospital. Could not see anyone coming from that elderly housing to make, to cross. And you could not see the blinking light. So I passed it on like a Friday, and I thought, maybe they're just doing a delivery. Came back the next day, and it was still there. So it was over 24 hours that that truck was parked there. And so I called Lieutenant Tucker, and I was like, this can't, like, what is happening right now? And so he tracked down the driver, and the driver didn't know that you couldn't park there and move the truck, which is fine, right? But how come none of the other police officers on duty thought to just run the plate and find out why this truck was parked there? So you don't have to answer that specifically, but it's things like that. It's things like cars with wheels on the sidewalk that, I know that the officers drive by and nobody stops to even give them a warning. Like, it just, it's, that's what I hear the most of. People are just frustrated because there's no enforcement on things like that that are so obvious. So I just want to leave that. But the truck was really infuriating that that could happen. And then finally, you were talking about hiring new officers to increase the numbers. Where are they targeted for? What departments or what divisions are they targeted for?
Well, when officers come in, they're assigned to patrol. So, and I think, to speak to Counselor Watsonfeld's point, when I came in, we were short a number of officers, and that dipped down to a deficit of 15. And of course, we're much, much closer to where we should be. And so that's allowed me to make those assignments, additional assignments to traffic and additional assignments to CIU. We're pretty close to where we should be, and we do have minimum manning on patrol. So, you know, probably, they'd be assigned to patrol, and I wouldn't make any more assignments. We're short one in detectives, but I may leave it that way for the time being. They're doing pretty well despite that deficit. But, you know, I would love more officers to assign to traffic and CIU and detectives. But I think we're roughly where we can be. And I think, you know, I always bring up the possibility of adding more officers to the department going over 95. And I think that's certainly a conversation we can have, but of course, that is very expensive.
Okay. Thank you. And I also want to say, communication's been great. I, actually, that is feedback that I hear from residents, is they are grateful with how open the department is, and they do see a difference. So, thank you.
Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel, through you to the chief. Thank you, gratitude to you. I'd like to echo that communication has definitely been just really great, very responsive, and that's highly appreciated. I'd like to start with a motion that Derby comes to every meeting going.
My most popular decision.
I did have a few questions about the data that was shared, kind of to ping off of some other fellow counselors' comments that were made. The motor vehicle citation violations increased slightly, which we can see from the increase of traffic enforcement personnel, which doubled essentially, right? We went from two in the field to four in the field. I would have expected that number to increase a little more than just a couple hundred. I don't know if there are any expectations around that, or do you think next year or the year after?
I can tell you that in the first few months of this year, it's up an even greater percentage.
Okay. And those numbers are moving, vehicle, not like parking tickets and things like that. And then, similar vein, I think the frustration that I hear, my example is not Highland Ave, although I do see that driving to Collins every day. My example is North Street. I just stopped calling in about the bike lane enforcement that doesn't happen. And it's frustrating driving on it or walking on it multiple times a day, seeing vehicles not following the rules, and then seeing a patrol officer or someone in a police vehicle drive by. It's just, I understand, because we've had this conversation many times, that I don't know what that officer is driving to, or what they're heading towards or doing. But seen it multiple times, and it's hard to relay that message of only traffic enforcement officers enforce the traffic patterns, or to call in the violation and somebody can come out and check, because then when that happens, and there's little follow-up. So I just kind of want to echo those comments that the visibility of the enforcement, I think, could be better. You know, maybe if we are sharing the citations that are issued or enforcement areas after the fact. I think I mentioned this last year, that, you know, I know the work is being done, but visibly, it's not necessarily seen from the public when they see, you know, the car is still whipping through the neighborhood or enforcement not being followed. So how can we work off of your great communication and communicate out the great work that we're doing and what else we're doing and taking in that feedback? Because it's just, it's definitely a frustration with the public, I think. I did have a question that, because I saw that you were requesting four additional bikes from Salem Cycle that was not approved. So I was curious what number of bikes you have in your inventory.
Right now, I believe we have six working bikes, and that's, you know, that's adequate for the number of bikes I can typically, number of officers on bikes I can typically field. What I found last year when we bought a couple of new bikes is that the officers really like new bikes, and they're more enthusiastic about bike patrol if they get a new bike. You know, I hate to admit, we are like little kids in that regard, but I like new bikes too. But the ones we have are adequate to do, to do the patrol.
Okay. And could you speak to the animal control officer addition? I think that's definitely another one that we have very passionate and caring residents in the city that often, you know, want to call in, or it was interesting to see the abandoned animal care line in your, in your budget as well. So how, I guess, is there any plan for that animal control officer? Have they started yet? Is it going to be an existing member or someone new? And how are they going to kind of interact with the public? Because it's definitely kind of a different facing position, I think, than others.
So the officer has started. He is part-time with us and part-time with Swambska. He, I think, he brings a level of enthusiasm to the job that is, it's good, and both from an enforcement perspective and a compassion perspective. I made some changes to the animal control now department. For a variety of reasons, I removed their guns, their firearms, I felt like that, that if they're entering a situation that's dangerous, they should have a police officer, fully sworn police officer beside them. That does raise the possibility if they were, need to euthanize an animal. But that happens seldom enough that, again, they could call a police officer to the scene. And I'd really, truly want a supervisor at the scene to do something like that anyway. But does that answer your question?
I guess so, yeah. I'm sure I'll probably have more, and I'll just reach out to you. I get a lot of animal control officer requests and follow-ups. So just, I guess, continuing same line of communication with how the, because the current animal control officer, that's part-time, I reach out directly to Officer Frimiko, so assuming there's a different contact or if that information can be shared.
Yes.
And then, I think that was it, actually. Let me just double-check. Oh, I was wondering what the flock cameras, license plate readers were, because Counselor Masilla's comments kind of had me wondering, are those license plate readers specifically for the patrol cars? Is that what the offer that's used?
They're mobile, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pengalo?
Just one point of clarification on the bikes, because I like bikes too. That was not a reduction from the mayor's, that the approved FY24 number was 6,800. There was no request for FY25.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Counselor Posniewski?
Thank you. Chief, we all know that police work is an ever-changing challenge, and as a community changes, so does the way a police force addresses the challenges that are being, that are happening within the community. And we've seen our challenges the last few years. I'm glad to see an increase in the CIU, only because of the amount of work the CIU has to do to accept the challenge of our homeless population, which has been growing steadily over the years. My question is, has there also been an increase in the amount of civilian staff to support the CIU outreach workers, social workers? I know that you've got a yeoman's job ahead of you now that the new camping ordinance has been passed. And I'm just wondering what kind of, not just police effort, but civilian support you're going to be getting in that, in that effort.
So I got a federal earmark last year to hire two additional mental health clinicians, and sadly, I have not been able to find anybody to fill the job. We attempted to fill the positions through Leahy, and they didn't have any extra clinicians to give us. And we explored the idea of hiring our own. That has some other problems involving certification. But I have two, I have two unfilled openings. We did wind up using that money. We were able to redirect it to train more officers in crisis intervention. So I still think we got a pretty good benefit out of it. But, but we're, right now, we have two mental health clinicians.
And I know it was mentioned earlier that one of the statistics is that the amount of overdose deaths have dropped significantly. And I just don't want people to think that, I think people have to understand that that's because Narcan is a lot more readily available now, not just to public safety, but also to civilian. And a lot of, a lot of civilian staff, including homeless people, are carrying Narcan to be able to, to be able to revive people. So it's not so much that the opioid problem is dropping, it's just that the death is dropping because of the use of Narcan. I'm curious about, what is the cost on that? How does that, especially like to the police department, who's probably doing the yeoman's work of distributing that?
So we distributed, the Health Department obtains the Narcan, I believe, through a grant. Is that, yeah. But I think you're absolutely right that, I mean, if I had to point to one factor that has reduced the deaths, it's the prevalence of Narcan. We're also distributing fentanyl test strips. The usefulness of the test strips, though, is somewhat mitigated because there was a time when if somebody bought heroin, there was only a chance that it contained fentanyl. And of course, then, it would, was at least to be feared. Now, most of what is sold on the street as heroin is in fact just fentanyl. So the danger is, the danger is still significant. And, you know, I, if it sounds like I'm taking credit for the reduction, I'm happy to be one of the chefs in that kitchen. But there are a lot of really good actors out there working on that. I mentioned the Health Department, some of our private partners, Healthy Streets, and Chief Dionne mentioned the excellent work of Cataldo, and firefighters, really, it's all, it's a team effort to try to, to try to preserve some lives. And I think, I think we can, we all deserve a little bit of credit for it.
Thank you. And just on a different note, I know that the council has been seriously considering the pedestrian safety issues in the city, especially around some of the largest, larger intersections. I know that the mayor has made a decision to close off one of the crosswalks in Townhouse Square, which I applaud him for, because having the experience of working over there on many busy weekends and having a redirect, having a direct traffic, that second crosswalk is a huge safety impediment, not only to the pedestrians, but also as to the effective flow of traffic. So I agree wholeheartedly with that. With that, though, there was also talk, and I remember last year, we talked about putting, not a traffic light, but a pedestrian crossing walk light right at Townhouse Square, even if it was ten if it was temporary, just for maybe the two months that we're at our busiest. And it seems as that just kind of flows by the wayside. Because one problem, one problem is, probably the biggest problem, is the safety crossing of the pedestrians and in concert facilitating traffic movement so that you don't have the backup blockage that you do. And the pedestrian light was supposed to be part of the effort to kind of make it more safe and easier for pedestrians to know when to cross and when not to cross. You wouldn't happen to, you wouldn't have to have an officer standing in the square, having eyes in back of his head, spinning around, looking for vehicles and pedestrians at the same time, when if you had a pedestrian crosswalk, even a temporary one, that somebody could manipulate, an officer that would give pedestrians a certain amount of time to cross and then allow traffic to pass through. So, I just don't know, that kind of seemed to go by the wayside, nothing has been done. And I just don't, curious, has there been any more talk on that?
I think, I mean, I think the solution for Townhouse Square hasn't been reached yet. I know there's some significant pushback about the idea of putting in the fence. I still think the fence has some value in terms of pedestrian safety. But putting in a pure pedestrian signal, we haven't explored it, it's true, but I think that could be part of the solution as well. We'd have to look at that with the traffic department.
Again, okay, let's hope we make some movement on that maybe for next year, because I truly believe that it would help everybody be a win-win-win all the way around. Thank you.
I'll add one more comment, too. I do know of situations where your officers have responded to people in crisis, and their approach being compassionate with a focus on de-escalation. And I know that firsthand, and it's recognized and appreciated. I didn't know if you wanted to, I'll see if there's any more questions, and also didn't know if you wanted to move over to your capital improvement projects. Okay. Does, anyone, yes, Counselor Murcilla?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick one, just to follow up with Counselor Stott's discussion about the animal control officer agreed, for some reason. There's a lot of people that really get very excited about what they're doing and where they are and why aren't they here. Could you provide some data about, you know, what they're doing, I think? How many calls they're responding to? How often they go to parks to enforce leash laws? I mean, that sort of thing, just to help the public understand how they're being utilized day-to-day, that would be great.
Of course. I don't have that with me, but I'm happy.
No, I understand, I understand.
Did you want to go over?
So, I mentioned a couple of the ones that I'm interested in, the fast chargers and the downtown speakers. There's one other, which is our ventilation system.
Great.
The HVAC on our roof, which...
Let me hop over to the page for everyone, then. That's tab seven, it's page 263. It's a big book, so give us a second.
Yeah, I think it crosses pages.
Right, it's, yeah, there are a couple of areas of it. Where do you want us?
The, I mean, I'll go through them, because I think there's some really important stuff here. The body worn cameras, which we've spent a lot of money on so far, but I think they need continuous updating. We pay for licensing, and we pay for the maintenance of the units, so that's reintroduced in the CIP budget. I think we've really reaped tremendous benefits from the use of the body worn cameras, so that's something I'm very attached to. Similarly, you know, additional funding for those cameras placed around the city. I know that there are a number, we have a kind of a queue of ones that have been funded, ones that are waiting to be installed, and ones that are waiting to be funded. But I think those are also important public safety, crime deterrence items. I mentioned that the outdoor speakers and the backup generator replacement, the fast chargers. We put in for our portable radio replacement. Chief Dionne spoke about the base station replacement, but our portable radios are aging and, you know, there's much better technology available. So, that's another one of the requests. I mentioned the HVAC units on the roof. You'll notice that the amount requested this year is sort of dwarfed by the amount requested for next year. That's based on some of the suggestions by Sustainability and Amoresco, the consultant that they hired. I mentioned also the redesign of the parking lot around the police station. I think as we get that fast charger in place, that will become more critical. I've also mentioned, I would like to turn, we have a little parking lot in the back where we use as an impound lot, but I think that would make a really excellent K-9 training facility. So, that's another thing I'd like to explore. That's just the redesign on the CIP so far, the, you know, plans. General repairs to the police station, you know, I think overall, our building is still very much current, but it dates back to Chief St. Pierre, and so there are improvements and things that need to be done on a fairly regular basis. And then finally, our vehicle replacement. You know, I think both, I mentioned in terms of zero emissions vehicles, but of course, we need regular, we try to buy hybrid police cars in order to comply with resiliency requirements, but there are other vehicles that, right now, we're looking at our prisoner transport van that needs replacing. So, another important one.
Great, thank you. Any questions? No? Okay. So, we'll go back to Section 13, page 438. And thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
For everything from your department and your team. Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to move that we recommend approval for the police budget for police personnel of $12,99,624, and police expenditures $1,7,660, for a department total of $13,107,284.
Second.
Thank you. So, Counselor, Counselor Stott moves to recommend approval of the personnel budget for the police department in the amount of $12,99,624. The expenditures budget in the amount of $1,7,660, for a total department budget of $13,107,284. Seconded by Counselor Prozniewski. All in favor? At the record show, I see three hands plus my own, so this passes four to zero. Great. And again, thank you all tonight. Yes, appreciate, appreciate all of you, and I'll entertain one more motion. Counsel Prozniewski.
Motion adjourned.
Great, all in favor? Great, good night, everyone.